Councilman Custer.
Here.
Councilman Grover. Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Canary.
Here.
Councilman Siviano. Councilman Gorman. Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Protem. Gonzalez.
Here. This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2015, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 23rd, 2014, and sent to the Starleisure and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Public session, public speaking, any taxpayer resident within the city council seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Go on to the first.
Okay. Letter dated January 28th, 2015, from the business administrator requesting on behalf of Aldi Transportation LLC Patterson, New Jersey, to operate as an autobus pursuant to chapter 5.16 Code City of Elizabeth. Bands are to be parked at 307 21st Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the business administrator requesting to amend the resolution adopted May 27th, 2014, awarding a contract to System Ed Rexall Admedco Business, specifically to change the name to Express Scripps, Inc., and the terms of the agreement should reflect July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2007.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Spruce Industries, Rawway, New Jersey, for the purchase of janitorial supplies for parish departments for the period January 22nd, 2015 through January 21st, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $65,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to building inspection underwriters Inc. of Easterville, Pennsylvania, for the furnishing of third-party elevator inspection services for the construction bureau for a period of two years commencing from the day to be awarded, no charge to the city.
Any questions? Put it on. So I'd like to recognize Councilman Siviano.
Thank you.
Let me...
Thank you.
January 30th.
I'm still defrosting.
He's so small, you didn't see him walk in.
Yeah, I tiptoed in.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Morton Salt, Inc., Chicago, Illinois, for the purchase of rock salt and solar salt in various bulk and bag quantities for snow removal for the Department of Public Works for the period January 31st, 2015 through January 31st, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $544,250.
Any questions? Counselors.
Are we... Bridget, do you know... are we knowing salt?
I do not know that, but I can ask.
Okay. So I went to the yard department, the three of the snowstorm last week, and I guess they told me, they informed me that they had to send four trucks out to go pull up the salts from somewhere else.
Well, no, we generally do that. The salt, even though we're buying it from Chicago, comes into the port, and the director of public works found it more efficient to send our drivers to go wait in line, pick up the salt, and bring it back.
Not dump it in our little dome?
No, no, they come pick it up and then put it, and then fill it from the dome, but I will find out the specifics.
Okay, yeah, 'cause to my understanding, there were other companies also, and we wait, you know, behind several other companies.
Oh, without a doubt. The way it works is that the drivers that contract are paid, which I'm sure you very well aware, distance.
Okay.
So a lot of times, Elizabeth gets chosen last because of our proximity to the port. There, it's not as profitable to the driver, and they don't want to wait that much time. So yes, that is true. Unfortunately, that there is time spent in a queue, but it still seems to be more efficient. But I will definitely check that with you. I mean, and also ask you regarding the amount of salt.
Bridget, we had approved one up until the 30th or 31st of this month. I thought we would have some.
Oh, no, I think we do have it. No, I mean, but even as we run low, we, it's always been, my understanding is that it's been customary for us to go and pick up our own salt as opposed to waiting to have it delivered, because it just seems that there's more, we have more control.
Yeah, I understand the concern, especially with more storms on the way.
Yeah.
The silo can only hold so much.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so that's it, so they do, um...
The silo can only hold so much.
Yeah.
Once it gets empty, you gotta go get it and bring it back.
Well, this was our first storm, so that's why I thought we already had it packed in there.
Well, you better remember, we had, it was the first storm, but everything was ice, so they were pushing out salt. It was a lot less plowing going on and a lot more salt going on because of the ice. Was it the last week when the freaking sidewalks were all full of sheets of ice? I almost fell on my own sidewalk. So I mean, there's no plowings that can help that, it's gonna be salt.
And even with what was done, I mean, there's so much ice on the streets now, too.
No, the city yard did an amazing job, I just wanted to know.
We do, we actively pick it up and then have some.
Okay, now I know.
Supposedly another storm coming on Thursday.
Thursday.
Sunday to Monday, too.
Tomorrow's supposed to melt a little bit.
Thanks, man.
You got it.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated February 2nd, 2015, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Trinitas Regional Medical Center Care EAP Program, Elizabeth, for the implementation of an employee assistance program and alcohol education program for the period commencing January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any questions?
Letter dated January 26th, 2015, from the city attorney requesting to vacate the remaining portion of Brighton Street and unincluding street from Trenton Avenue in a southeasterly direction to the right-of-way line of the New Jersey Turnpike.
So, Bridget, does this mean now that this just will not be PSCNGs in the turnpike in the state? Is that what this means?
That is my understanding, but I will get clarification. George, do you any, do you know anymore?
Yeah, I mean, there's already a PSCNG facility on top of it. It's just a paper street.
Right.
And this is the last portion of it.
Yeah, we vacated so they can build a new school over there, a portion of Brighton, so I know this is the other half of it, but I just wasn't sure if that's what's gonna be the case. We vacated, then they take it over, and that's the only for the city.
Yeah, I don't believe we have any, tell me if you have anything there.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem. Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 23rd, 2015, from the chief financial officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of the city's tax year 2015 cash management plan for the period January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated January 23rd, 2015, from the chief financial officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to establish rules and regulations for the payment of taxes and to fix the rate of interest to be charged for delinquent taxes, assessments, water, and sewer charges.
Any questions? Looks like this is remaining the same, nothing has changed.
Yes. Yep.
Right, put it on.
Letter dated February 2nd, 2015, from the director of Health and Human Services requesting to amend ordinance number 2707 entitled "Rooming Houses," specifically to change the definition of the licensing authority to the Department of Health and Human Services and delete the Rooming and Boarding House Site Licensing Board.
That's what's happening now, isn't it?
Correct. But it's not in the, this is codifying it.
So we're cleaning up the code?
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so it's... I've never heard of that before.
Any questions?
Letter dated January 28th, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to reprogram the unexpended balances from the Community Development Block Grant to the Community Development Block Grant holding account as indicated on attached Schedule A.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated January 29th, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a rental housing program deferred payment repayable loan to Parker's View Urban Renewal LLC Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for the property located at 230 Parker Road to rehabilitate an existing building of one program assisted residential unit of a 60-unit project in the amount of $60,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Siviano.
It seemed like there was another one right before that. I don't know if I was the only one that had.
What's that?
There should be two.
Two of them.
Yeah, two.
Oh, this was the letter, I believe, clarifying, this isn't a request for action. This is the response to the inquiry, I believe, that you may have had.
Yeah. So $60,000 just for one unit in this building?
Yes, one program, and I will confirm that, by the way, I understand that it's one program assisted residential unit of a 60-unit project.
Wow. People have houses, 60,000.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Siviano?
You don't have one? You should have.
They don't have this for 23rd?
Yeah, it's probably in...
It's in here.
No, the response, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I told him to put it on the very top.
Response should be...
That one.
Okay.
Letter dated January 29th, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a rental housing program deferred payment repayable loan to Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC Lawrenceville for the property located at 202 20 Parker Road for the demolition of two existing buildings and new construction of 13 program assisted residential units of a 96-unit project in the amount of $772,899.
Any comments? Now, this is, I think, is this the 96 unit that we thought was gonna be senior building?
Correct.
Why, I mean, I don't know. I'm not gonna, I mean, this is Councilman Siviano's work, but why are we building back up the buildings that we knocked down? I mean, we're just putting Oprah Plaza back there again. The whole point was we're gonna diminish the amount of concentration, and we're gonna put a senior building in there like we did down at the Hope 6 to kind of mix it up a little, and, I mean, listen, I'm not in favor of this, my personal opinion, but, I mean, I'm not the word counselor, but the whole idea of the renovation of that site was to reduce the amount of family units and put in some senior building. I just don't see what we're doing.
Well, I believe that it's newer building, newer units, lighter units, I think that they're built in smaller chunks to give it a better capacity as far as vetting of potential tenants, of monitoring tenants, and of keeping it closer to the project, and just overall providing better quality product upon which to have the residents live as opposed to what's there currently. And the expectation had been senior, but unfortunately, as a result of the various funding programs through tax credits, et cetera, they have been unsuccessful in being able to get them for a senior-only property. So my understanding, again, was that the decision had been made from a business standpoint, this gets money influx, and at the end of the day, provides better quality of life for the residents that are in there because the units are newer, cleaner, and there'll be a more prudent process as far as vetting tenants.
Well, what they're doing is building a brand of building.
Correct.
My thing is, if you can't find the money to get the building built as a senior building, don't build the building.
That potentially, you know, and you are rightfully so entitled...
By doing, by not building a building, then you reduce the concentration density of population, which was the intent of this movement.
But it does not take away the mandate from HUD with regards to the units that they're qualified to replace. I mean, it's complicated, I mean, I'm not, you know, this is the way I understand it. I start, you know...
I just, yeah, I was just gonna say, I completely agree with Manny, too. They, are they changing it for family status? I know it says here to be more competitive for financing, but would they still be able to try to keep it as a senior building, even though, you know what I mean, like, they're trying to do that as more of a family standpoint, but still, I don't know if there's any way that they could still try to maintain, like, mostly seniors in that building.
Even though, even though all families are permitted to live there, perhaps that they can be more restrictive when it comes to age 55 and older. I think that's certainly a possibility. I did see a communication from some of the principals of CIS. They are, you know, more than happy to come in and to meet with you. We can either do it here pre-council or we can do a separate meeting.
That would be good, yeah, 'cause she came in here, she presented this whole thing, and we didn't have a senior building, I mean, it was...
And I believe she's still willing to come and update you guys with regards to the progress that they've made and the improvements.
No, definitely, yeah, that's something I was gonna bring up, if they're able to come do an updated presentation of just how everything's going, because I know one, another concern, too, like, with a lot of the tenants that live there is just, these renovations are happening, but they don't see a change. And that was how Manny said, the main thing from the start was to bring a change, even from the standpoint that a lot of the tenants that might have been causing a lot of the problems prior, they've been allowed to come back, too. So really, it's starting to look a little bit prettier, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
But it's just a false facade and not really solving the main issues that they're having. And I know some of the tenants, too, they've even been complaining with certain things with the management, that they've been just putting a lot of stuff, I mentioned...
You and I, yep.
Fine print in the lease, having them sign it, and find out that they have to pay different things that they weren't expected to pay before, so a lot of little things like that, too.
Absolutely, so I will certainly, I'll get some dates prior to either pre-council or regular council meeting, and I'll communicate what you want.
That'd be great, thank you.
Great. Absolutely.
Counselor Siviano.
Yes, Mr. President, I don't want to repeat the same thing that both Councilmen and so other one we described, but I have, I have the same reservations. You know, definitely it's an area that needs to be renovated, obviously, these new units are great to have, but I have the same concern. If we're gonna have the same type of setup that we had before, you know, in a few years, we're gonna go back to square one. So I'm not gonna oppose this at this time, but I do have reservations, and I would like to have perhaps more information. The point that Councilman made is a good one, if we can somehow, not mandate, but perhaps make sure that seniors are given the opportunity first.
Absolutely.
I would really refer that. Again, based on the presentation that we heard a lot ago, we were all convinced that it was gonna be primary senior, so...
I guess, well, Bridget, as you've heard, you know, the feeling of the body here, can we get CIS to come in?
Yes.
Just Folo to come in?
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes so, so we can find out if they're made able to, some of the suggestions that have been made.
Absolutely, I will reach out tomorrow and then communicate what you want, they get them in ASAP.
Counselor Maza.
Bridget, that was the original, the problem that they had, that there was a $20 million cut on this particular project. Subsequently, they had to do with less money and try to create almost the same amount of units. Apparently, whatever they agreed to go along, it's not forthcoming, because you mentioned the money is coming from a different sources to be utilized. So now, if I have to marry my daughter, how am I gonna use my money to make my son a doctor? It doesn't work that way, so I don't know what kind of explanation you guys are gonna expect when it comes to that meeting. I mean, you're welcome to have a meeting, whatever, but I'm sure you wanna help them out to do the best that she can so that we don't have a high saw that existed there right now. So whatever the best that we could move in the right direction, whether it's senior citizens or middle-aged people, you know, I think it should be the way, unless there's a miracle by Obama before he retires.
That would be nice.
But I mean, it would be really nice. Thanks, Mr. President.
Sure, Counselor. Well, I'm hearing, we wanna put this on, but we do want to bring them in so they can be able to assist as possible.
Absolutely.
Okay. Put it on.
Okay. Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution adopted December 9th, 2014, authorizing the execution of emergency solution grants, specifically to reflect that these contracts meet the statute and regulations governing the award and the certifications of extraordinary unspecified services are on file in the office of the city clerk.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution adopted December 9th, 2014, authorizing the execution of Community Development Block Grants specifically to reflect that these contracts meet the statute and regulations governing the award and that the certifications of extraordinary unspecifiable services are on file in the office of the city clerk.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 2nd, 2015, from the director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract and sign all appropriate documents with Harvard Consultants, Cranford, New Jersey, to prepare a new master plan for the city of Elizabeth in an amount not to exceed $175,000.
Any comments? Councilor, the master plan?
It's happening, Mr. President, so...
It was your wave.
We have.
In a few months.
Yeah.
Few months.
At a business administrator.
Absolutely. Well, at the request of the consultant, he waited, he asked to wait till after.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's all good. And the land use, based on conversations I had with Mr. Vinaigura, of course, you know, the master plan is a very all-combusing project in itself, but he will accelerate the land use plan to make sure, the communication, that we can get that through as quickly as possible.
We'll have opportunities for the council.
Oh, without a doubt, oh, yes.
Yes, and just, the new council people that just came on, our master plan has to be revised in our city, I think it's once every 10 years or something. And what normally happens is the planner, who's gonna be awarded the contract, will sit with every member of council and see if there's any parcels of land in your ward that you feel should be changed in zones, from residential to commercial to industrial, whatever. So just keep in mind that this is a long process. But if there's a section in your ward that, or a property in your ward that you think or you've already decided that needs to be changed, he can put forth like a piecemeal in the beginning before we do the whole master plan. Okay, any comments? The letter to free land? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated January 20th, 2015, from the director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for the boarding of upset properties in the amount of $872.40.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated January 30th, 2015, from the director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to T and M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a timing material basis for actual timing expenses in connection with design and construction inspection of standalone solar traffic control signs at a cost not to exceed $100,000 plus reimbursement.
Any comments?
Mr. President, all this location that we have attached, are they already into place that are working right now?
No.
Or they're going to do it?
These are the proposed locations?
These are the proposed locations.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Some, I'm sorry, some may have signage at this point in time, but the, these would be new solar-powered LED, brighter light, so we may have signs that aren't illuminated right now.
Yes, some are already working.
Right.
No problem, it's good.
Yeah, and if you'll see, they're broken down into flashing stop signs, bridge height signs, pedestrian crossing signs, so...
And this is a million-dollar grant that we received.
This is a grant that we received from, yes, the Department of Energy.
Great. Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 1st, 2015, from the director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for the boarding of upset property in the amount of $1,536.95.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated January 26th, 2015, from the police director requesting to establish no turn on red on East Fourth Street at Magnolia Avenue and Jake Street at Elizabeth Avenue. The autistic child sign was adopted January 27th.
All right, council people for the those two areas?
Yeah, Jake Street, put them on, please, it's needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, put it on.
Letter dated January 26th, 2015, from the police director requesting to establish a 15-minute loading zone on Jefferson Avenue East Side, beginning 98 feet from New Jersey Street, on Jefferson Avenue and continuing north for 27 feet. I spoke with Councilman Gorman today, and he asked if this can hold.
He asked if this can hold?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, even on this particular area, I go to the barber almost twice a week, and I have to go park in Charlie Harris Park Lot and put about a dollar of my money to park. There's constantly people parking above the sidewalk without respect. Either they go inside the building, they go inside the store, and I never saw once a ticket given out. No way we're gonna allow them to have a loading zone there, okay? Because it's gonna allow more, it's gonna encourage more people to illegally park as they do right now. I know somebody parked, he went up to the sixth floor almost an hour. You know, it's not a matter of 10 minutes, I'm rushing in, drop off a package, and come out. If I would have done what some of these people are doing there, I would probably end up to be, my car to be towed away. But unfortunately, I go twice a week to the barber, right there, whatever they were planning to put this kind of, I would be encouraged, but from 15 minutes, only if they are commercial, let's say UPS or FedEx and things like that, it's okay. But I see cars, I don't wanna mention, you know, some of those people that I saw parking, it's a matter of respect. So I think it's the councilman that is in charge of that particular area, if he has to study, I don't know, but I don't think it's the, that portion that might be also in the sixth floor. Ampton Place, it went to the sixth. Jefferson Avenue, I think it's still in the sixth.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the boundaries of the two wards, but...
I know.
Councilman Gorman has asked to be placed on hold, so maybe we can, when he gets back, you guys can maybe sit down and have a chat about that, how's that?
I have no problem.
Councilman Maza.
I think I could cut your hair like mine, so you could have...
Don't worry about it. It's natural, it's a remedy.
You know, once a month, that's like it's...
I love you. Okay, all right, well, over, that's our shape.
Okay, letter dated January 26th, 2015, from the police director requesting to establish handicap parking spaces in the following location. First ward, 455 First Avenue, personalized.
I'm gonna hold it.
Okay. First ward, 227 Hind Street, personalized.
Do you need to hold it? I recognize the council president, Ferguson.
Thank you.
I want to talk to them first before they know that they have to pay with this person.
Oh, okay. First ward, 140 Ripley.
I'm holding that one off.
Also, okay. Fourth ward, 1009 Killseyth Road.
Could hold that?
Okay. Also, 154 Sire.
You could put that one up.
Okay. Second ward, 917 McLean Street.
Hold, please.
Okay, and then the next one's on hold. Third ward, 263 Orchard Street.
You put that through.
Put it through?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last one is on hold, and there's a deletion at 45 Orchard Street.
Okay.
Email dated January 21st, 2015, from the director of the Free Public Library requesting that your honorable body consider designating February 2015 as Library Leaders Month in Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Where's the key?
Free Public Library.
Yeah, Free Public Library.
Anybody, are comments up? Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
All right, put it on.
Letter dated January 19th, 2015, from Environmental Management Associates, Farmingdale, New Jersey, is requesting access to the right-of-way on the east side of Neck Lane in order to install a replacement monitoring well, MW13R.
Any comments? Put it on.
You have the Fair Rental Housing Board minutes of November 12th, 2014, and then And then there's the response to inquiries on Parker Walk and/or Parker's new projects. Okay, I just want to say that the five items that were removed from the last agenda, we received all of the certificates of availability. So, they'll go back on.
That's it, uh, the first round?
Mr. President, how many?
The one's around, Councilman? Yeah, just throw it over. Just have one thing, um, this is for our attorney. Um, it's been brought to my attention that, um, that synthetic marijuana has been declared legal by the federal government. Dated back to about three, four years ago. And it's, um, when I understand the chemicals that they use, it actually is worse than real marijuana. For some reason, there are a couple of stores in Elizabeth that are still selling this stuff. I don't have it with me, but I can have it over to you. And I'm gonna send you the information. I think, um, if it's a federal violation, then I don't know if our police department can force it, or do we bring them to the Federal, this back-up foreign enforcement agency? And then the other question is, um, should, do we need to, or should we pass a local ordinance?
Um, I'll look into those questions, and I'll get back to you.
One more question, Mr. President? Councilman Torres?
Thank you. February, we celebrate Black History Month. I just wanted to recognize, uh, Councilwoman Patricia Perkins Agusti, who actually had an event here yesterday, a great event, was well-attended, her and, uh, Director Krishna Garlic, President of the NAACP. It was great to see the youth here, so I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Perkins, it was a great event. I also want to recognize, uh, Ms. Elaine Johnson. She actually lives in my ward, but she actually marched with Martin Luther King from Selma to Montgomery during the Civil Rights Movement. So, I, I just found that out yesterday. I wish I would've known she would've been up here yesterday. I just would like to recognize her. And last but not least, where's our police presence here?
Good question.
Oh, here they come.
They heard you.
I sent a text to the Police Director at 7:30, and I got a response that they're on their way.
Okay, they just showed up. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
We have a police staff.
Nothing, you see? Councilman Mazza?
I have a memorial for Francis La Roca, L-A-R-O-C-C-L. I'll give you the information for our city clerk, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
Um, just the only thing I wanted to say within our packets, we'll probably receive the petition from the businesses in the 200 block of North Broad Street. I know that, um, I'm meeting with Lieutenant Marcus and the, a couple of the key people there just to see and to share within the concerns. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone received the petition so they can know it, too.
Council, whatever you want.
That's it, thank you.
Perkins Agusti? Nothing? See you then, motion to adjourn?
Me?